The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular meeting of the Plainville Town Council. Today is Monday, July 18th, 2022, 7:00 PM. If you'll please stand for the pledge, I'll ask Councilwoman Moranti to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. We do not have any presentations, nor do we have a public hearing this evening, so I will ask for approval of our previous minutes, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting, June 14th, 2022, special meeting, and June 20th, 2022, special regular meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Announcements and reports? Do I have any announcements and reports tonight?
Madam Chair.
Rosemary.
Back on June 22nd, just after our last meeting, I attended a June meeting of the Housing Authority, and probably the most significant thing to mention is they did open their waiting list for applications to the various senior housing and the housing that they...
Hmm, okay. Are there any other announcements or reports? I have none. My meeting with the Commission on Aging are on hiatus now until September, so they won't be around, as well as the Board of Education will reconvene in September. So if there are no other reports to make, we'll move along to appointments and resignations.
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
Motion to acknowledge the retirement of Mark Cahill from the Plainville Fire Department.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments on the motion? How long was Mark Cahill with the fire department? Did you tell me he was 30 some on you?
He was either 30 or 35.
Okay. Does he get some special recognition from the fire department, or is there anything we should send along to recognize his service?
We... The town council did present him with a chair, I believe, on his 30th anniversary.
Okay.
He has been recognized by the town.
Okay, okay, perfect. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two? Go ahead, Rosemary.
Motion to accept or regret the resignation of Merrill and Tettit from the Committee on Aging.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Motion to appoint Kathleen Marsan, 44 Shuttle Metal Road, to the Committee on Aging for the term expiring August 1st, 2023.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to reappoint the following individuals to the Recreation and Park Advisory Board: Ezio Capotzi, Colin Cassidy, and Benjamin Gettiman.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number four, we have to add... We have to add that to our agenda. Can we just... It's for... To appoint Joyce...
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Just a motion to add, under Section 5, Number 4, Library Board of Trustees' Appointment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to appoint Joyce Goldberg to the Library Board of Trustees for the term ending November 4th, 2025.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Are there any other appointments or reappointments tonight that are not listed on our agenda? Nope. Moving along. Okay, Board of Education liaison, there's no report for that tonight. Report of the Town Attorney, Attorney Mastriani, do you have anything for us tonight?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you for being here. All right, item number eight, Report of the Town Manager, Mr. Lee.
Yes, I do have a couple of items, the first of which is the crack sealing from a CROG bid. Town staff is proposing to crack seal 12 roads this year. A list of the specific streets to be cracked sealed was included in your meeting information package. Town staff is recommending utilizing USeal of Bloomfield, Connecticut, at a cost of 87 cents per pound of seal installed. This is seven cents less than what was paid for the same work last year. The per pound amount was determined by a CROG solicitation invitation for bid for asphalt pavement crack sealing issued earlier this year. The value of the work will not exceed $50,000 and will be paid from the Town Aid Road account. There is an item under new business regarding this recommendation to award the crack sealing work to... On 12 town roads to USeal of Bloomfield, Connecticut, at a cost not to exceed $50,000. Next item I have is the CWPM condominium collection contract. CWPM has had a contract with the town to collect trash and recyclables from condominiums in town since the early 1990s. Recently, it was discovered that the contract with CWPM expired in June 30th, 2019. However, CWPM continued condominium collection to this date at the same per-unit price of $208.81. I contacted CWPM, and they proposed extending the contract for five years, beginning July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2027, at the same unit price, which is $208.81, with no increase during the term of the contract. It should be noted that this unit price has been in place since 2013. It should also be noted that the unit price before 2013 was $219.80. It's my recommendation that the town council approve the extension of the contract with CWPM for five years, at the same unit price that has been in place since 2013. CWPM has done a fine job of collecting solid waste and recycling from the condominiums for many years, with minimal, if any, complaints. They're very quick to respond to issues that may arise, and they work very well with the town staff. Additionally, CWPM has proposed to keep the unit price steady during the length of the contract, even though the tip fee from Covanta is scheduled to increase by a rate of... By the rate of inflation each year going forward. CWPM will be absorbing this increase. They are also a Plainville company. In conclusion, there are 864 condominium units under the current CWPM contract for an annual cost of $180,411.64. This annual amount has not changed, other than the number of units, since 2013. There is an item under new business to accept the offer of CWPM to extend the condominium solid waste and recyclables contract for the next five years at a per-unit cost of $208.81.
Okay.
Next item I have is the FAA Airport Grant Offer for a project. The FAA has made a grant offer to Plainville to construct four safety projects at Robertson Airport. These projects are: One, a weather reporting equipment station, otherwise known as an AWAS-3; a primary wind cone, which is a NAVAID; a segmented circle, which is also a NAVAID; and a vertical visual guidance system runway for Runways 2/20, 2 and 20, which is known as a PAPI, P-A-P-I, for both runway ends. The proposed grant is for $1,318,500. This amount represents 90% of the total estimated project cost of $1,465,000. The state will be contributing $40,000 towards this project, and the local share is estimated at $106,500. The local share will be paid from the Robertson Airport Fund budget. To enter into the grant agreement, FAA requires that the town council give authority to execute the grant to the town's authorized representative, and there is an item under new business that would authorize the town manager to execute the grant agreement on behalf of Plainville. The work's been bid, so we know what the... You know, it was bid earlier this year. That was a requirement in order to submit the grant, and, you know, once the grant is awarded, it's intended that this work will begin later this fall and be completed hopefully as soon as possible. Next item I have is the White Oak Project Discussion, and I've called it the Cleanout Proposal. Newport Manafort recently expressed concern with the condition of the interior of the White Oak Building, specifically the paper, furniture, equipment, et cetera, that has been scattered, broken by vandals throughout the building. They were concerned that, in its present condition, the building could be subject to a major fire if someone gained entrance to the abandoned structure. In fact, a recent tour of the facility indicated that someone started a bonfire in the garage area over the winter. I toured the building and concurred with the concern as well. I spoke with Attorney Mastriani regarding this issue, and he indicated the town does have a financial and insurable interest in the property, and that we should consider protecting that interest. Under our agreement with Newport Manafort, they would be responsible for cleaning out the building once they took possession of it. However, that may take months, as the remediation would need to be completed first. An estimated cost to perform this work is attached, and it was part of the package. The cost is $84,510, and that was submitted by Manafort. Attorney Mastriani, Carl Harburger, and I are recommending that the town and Newport Manafort enter an agreement whereby the town pays to remove the material, with Newport Manafort reimbursing the town when it is turned over to them. There is an item under new business regarding this recommendation. Mike, I don't know if you want to add anything to that discussion at all?
Well, I would just add that I think the town has a lot at stake, and has poured a lot of money and effort into this project so far. And I actually looked back at my notes and the original file, and I saw the first option that we signed with Mrs. Tofflon dates back to April of 2017, so more than five years ago. I think it's prudent that we continue to protect our interest in that property.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I have a question. Robert, in the meantime, what are we going to do to ensure security around that building so that break-ins can't happen and people can't make bonfires in the garage area? What's going to be done to secure that area?
Well, work is going to begin to remove... There's going to be more action... There's going to be more people going throughout the building once the grant is in place, and we will set up a... Hopefully, I will set up, you know, and ask staff to set up in place. Hopefully, we follow with Mike going forward, in that we make regular inspections of the property to make sure people aren't, you know, you know, regular walkthroughs on the building to make sure people aren't breaking into it, so to speak. We did, we did, you know, have buildings and grounds secure the building, you know, once we discovered that situation, and, you know, and there's been more staff walking through the building. We've asked the police department also to, you know, keep an eye out for suspicious people as well.
Yeah, maybe in nighttime, you know, people going there at night, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Madam.
I did say the last time I toured it, and I know, I believe, Mike, you toured it last week?
Yeah, last week, yeah.
Well, we didn't see any evidence that anybody was, you know, habitating, but you've got to keep a constant watch on it, for sure.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item I have is the Hemingway Street Drainage Discussion. Town staff and several town council members recently met with some residents of Hemingway Street to discuss a flooding problem with their properties. Town staff is looking for direction as to whether the town should assist residents with this problem. It should be noted that there is water draining into this area from town-owned property as well.
So I'll just start off. I did take the tour, and I do believe that would be worthwhile for the town to help that neighborhood out. Certainly, nothing that has happened there has to do with anything that they've done. As Robert had explained to us earlier, it's a drainage system that is no longer functional from a contractor that developed that area, and certainly nothing that the neighbors have done. So I think it's worthwhile to have the town staff go ahead and see what they can do to remediate some of that and help them out. I'm not sure about the cost involved, but I think it's a good idea. I know that Mr. Underwood and Rosemary Moranti were there as well, so they might want to speak on it as... In addition.
I agree with Kathy. I think that the town should be involved with the... Whatever work goes on over there. Absolutely.
Yeah, I think we do need to follow up and see what can, you know, decide what can be done and how much it's going to cost. And, you know, it's a neighborhood. I, you know, I used to walk down that street all the time to get down to the park to do my walking, and, you know, never realized that their backyards were that wet. Yeah, and it was really quite eye-opening.
Yep.
Right, and I was just looking for directions so that staff can be... Begin to put something together, which certainly would come back to the town council for consideration and, you know, and future action. So just, we didn't want to, you know, move forward with, you know, spending any time working on it if the council, you know, didn't give us some direction to see.
Okay. Everybody else okay with moving forward to put a plan down there? Certainly, I think it should be done.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Everybody all right with that? Okay.
Next item I've entitled Outdoor Dining. In 2004, I remember that because it was one of my... I remember the meeting, too. The town council adopted an ordinance regarding outdoor dining.
That's one of his first meetings.
The purpose of the ordinance was to permit the private use of public property for outdoor restaurants and café seating in the central commercial zone. In April 2022, the governor signed into law that, quote, "Notwithstanding any provision of the general statutes, special act, municipal charter, or ordinance, the zoning commission of each municipality shall now govern outdoor dining, including on, quote, 'public sidewalks and other pedestrian pathways,' unquote." Pursuant to the new law, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Plainville Planning and Zoning Commission, has already amended their regulations to include outdoor food and beverage service. I believe I gave you a copy of the zoning regulation, the changes that they made. Because the new state law makes the ordinance obsolete, if there are no objectives, town staff will begin the process to delete the outdoor dining ordinance. That probably would require a public hearing and, you know, and then action of the council after that, so.
Makes sense.
Okay, all right. Next item I have is the Honor Heights Sewer Extension. On May 17th, 2022, the town council held a public hearing on the proposed extension of sewers to the 82 homes in the Honor Heights subdivision. The estimated cost of the construction is between $1.2 million and $1.4 million, with $820,000 proposed to be funded by beneficial assessments, and the remainder utilizing existing state loss of monies. Town staff has recommended that the town council pass a motion authorizing moving forward with the project for construction next year. There is an item under new business regarding this recommendation, including language, that would cap any potential benefit assessment at no more than $10,000. The benefit assessment amount per home would be determined after the project is completed and all costs are known. So it's possible that it could be less than $10,000, and the council could make that decision at that point in time, but you really can't make that determination under statute until the project is completed and the final costs are known. Next item I have is vehicle purchases for Buildings and Grounds and the Building Official. The capital improvement plan budget included the replacement of several town vehicles. The city town staff is seeking authorization to move forward with two of those vehicles. The first is a replacement of the purchase of an F-250 three-quarter ton 4x4 pickup truck with body and plow for the Buildings and Grounds Department. The budget for this truck is $45,000. Town staff has secured a state contract price of $47,812.40, which is $2,812 higher than what was budgeted for the replacement. It is a 2022 truck and is already on the lot at Genghis. This truck, if purchased, will replace a truck that has already been taken off the road because of deterioration and safety concerns. The second vehicle is for the building inspector. The CIP budget included an amount of $27,000 to replace this vehicle. It is proposed that a 2022 Ford Explorer be purchased under a state contract from Genghis again, in the amount of $35,307.40. This is $8,307.40 higher than what was budgeted. I believe that the original budgeted amount of $27,000 was outdated and understated, coupled with the increase in vehicle prices. In my opinion, the $35,300 is being recommended as the vehicle was immediately available to the town. The overages will be covered by surpluses and other CIP projects that came in under budget, and that there is an item under new business for the purchase of both vehicles. Next item I have is the Police Department ARPA request. The American Rescue Plan Act list, originally approved by the town council earlier this year, included a line item of $200,000 for the police department. This evening, Chief Vangeli is proposing to spend $103,031 on night items for his department. The list includes the renovation and improvements to several areas within the police department building. It also includes the purchase of new badges, the creation of an honor guard unit, and the purchase of some new storage cabinets. Chief Vangeli is here this evening to answer any questions that you may have regarding this request. There is an item under new business that would call for a public hearing at the August 15th meeting, should the town council desire to move forward with this request. I don't know if you want to...
Yeah, can we have the chief come up and give us some of the highlights of the recommendation, please?
Let's get my list out of here. Good evening. Thank you for having me. So...
My list, you got it? Okay.
Yeah, I got it here. And so, as you know, we were given $200,000 through the ARPA funding, and I spent the last four months, you know, deciding how I wanted to spend that money, and getting the best bang for the buck out of that particular money. Well, the ultimate goal was to really, you know, better improvement... Improvements for the inside of the police department. As you know, the building isn't that old. It's about 22 years old. However, if you've ever been inside, when it comes to any type of storage or casework or anything that's attached to walls, either there wasn't done, or it was done with, you know, very shoddy materials that are already breaking down. For instance, at the current moment, we use a folding table to process prisoners, because we just, you know, the systems that are used are just broken and ill-used. So my goal was to get as much done by one company as possible. I will be getting some other quotes from other companies. However, I think these particular improvements will have the best bang for their buck, will also improve in the inside of the police department in terms of its function and its form, but also employee morale, because now they have a nice place to actually relax, in terms of their brand-new kitchen that I plan on getting them, and also the Holcomb Room. The Holcomb Room, you know, the company that I am going with is going to give us $4,000. They're going to donate that money when the time comes, if we choose this particular company. That particular room was named in honor of our former officer, Holcomb. It is a multipurpose room, and at this point, though, it's really not being used too much by our police department, if at all. And so my goal is to redo that room with a nice kitchen area, also getting some new seating, new flooring, and some electronics to make that a true training room in an emergency operations center that it's supposed to be, as well as some internal storage, administrative kitchenette on the upper floor, some casework in booking area, so that we can have a place for the officer to sit and actually book prisoners. You know, badges. Not sure if you know this, but our officers currently don't have badge numbers. And so, you know, you say, what do you get called on the radio? Well, some get called by their district number, which is where they're patrolling. Some get called by their car number. Some get called by their... Just a number that they like. Some get called by their seniority number. Some get called by their employee number. And so my... One of my goals when I first got here was to get everybody on the same page and to give them an actual badge number that is their number for life. They will put that on all their paperwork. That is their official number, and it will never be used once they retire. And so, of course, to make that happen, I want to make sure I at least be able to purchase the very first badge for them, and those will be coming in within several weeks. So that's one of those expenses. Plus, the creation of an honor guard unit. An honor guard unit, for lack of a better definition, is when there is any type of an event, especially an event where the police department is going to be involved. The honor guard are the official representatives of the police department. They have their own special uniform, which has a dress coat, which has a specific type of pants. They have their own hat, their own garb. They have special things on their uniforms, their own badges, their own everything. It takes a lot of money to uniform up each one of them. And we have six members that are interested in being honor guard members. They're going to receive some specific training through a National Honor Guard Academy, and they'll be at events like swearing-in ceremonies. If, you know, politicians are voted for, they'll be there at their inception, their swearing-in ceremonies. They'll be there at funerals, especially funerals of officers, and they'll represent the department in a lot of different other areas as well. So that's what an honor guard is in a nutshell. Also, the booking area, I was able to spend some money on the booking area already to get some new flooring paint put down, but I'm also going to get the walls painted prior to getting the casework built in. And then the garage is also getting the floor redone, our secondary garage, but I need storage cabinets because I lack significant storage space. I have nothing, and I know they did a massive cleanup before I got here. We'll probably do at least one more, where we're just going to start throwing away a lot of the old items that we have to make room, and then have that garage be a true storage area, so that things just aren't left all over the place, which I really don't like that. So any questions on any of that?
Any questions for the chief? I think that's a good use of the money to improve the building that's been there for over 20 years and make it a little bit better environment for the officers when they have some downtime. So I think it's a good use of those dollars.
Madam Chair, can I just have a quick question?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So honor guard, just so I'm getting this right, is a celebratory unit-type thing?
Well, it doesn't really have to be celebratory. They're the face of the department at different events. So for instance, if I had... Even if somebody in town, a well-known person, or a family member of an officer, you know, dies, I would probably have two of my honor guard stand by at the funeral home, at attention for the entire time. If there is a death of an officer, say, in Connecticut or in another state, I would dispatch my honor guard unit to be part of the marching honor guard unit for that particular town. When we have a parade, the honor guard, really what they're guarding is the flag. So the two or three members in the middle will be carrying flags, the American flag, state flag, and either a town flag or a law enforcement memorial flag. The two officers on the ends will usually carry a weapon. We do have World War II M1 Grands. They are specially outfitted just to shoot blanks. So we actually had a couple of our officers at the last parade at the VFW towards the end, but from now on, things like that will be our honor guard unit to take care of those types of events.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for the chief? Okay, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Great, thank you.
Explaining.
Appreciate it.
Next item I have is entitled Aquarian Water Company. Aquarian recently notified the town of their intent to file an application to amend their rate schedules. Aquarian filed a letter with PURA dated July 1st, 2022. They indicated that their request would increase rates over a three-year period beginning in February 2023. They also indicated that they have not had a rate increase since 2013, and during that period, they have invested $740 million in water utility infrastructure improvements. Aquarian serves approximately 685,000 customers in 56 municipalities. Their propose... Their proposal would increase rates and averages 25% over a three-year period. I recently had a conversation with a representative from Aquarian who informed me that their application does not include a rate increase for the former Valley Water customers. Let me repeat that. Formed me that their application does not include a rate increase for the former Valley Water customers as the improvements they were looking to fund did not include the Plainville system. PURA will make the final decision regarding the rate increase, and it is suggested that the town seek interveter status to monitor the progress and provide direct input as needed. So I think that's good news, but I think it's important that the town keeps an eye on it, so that PURA doesn't say, well, let's treat everybody the same, even though everybody is not the same in our particular instance. So that's the recommendation. That's all I have with the report at this time. I can turn it over to... Cindy, do you have some happenings? And then be available to answer questions you may have on this or any others. And then be available to answer questions you may have on this or any others.
The tax office is in its current collection month. If a taxpayer has not received their current bill or billing, please contact their office directly at 860-793-0221, extension 7134, or visit the town's website at www.plainvillect.com. This is a reminder that there will be a Republican and Democratic state primary on Tuesday, August 9th. All polling locations will be open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Absentee ballots will be available beginning Tuesday, July 19th. For more information regarding absentee ballots, you can contact the town clerk's office directly at 860-793-0221, extension 7151, or visit the town's website again at www.plainvillect.com. That's it.
Thank you. Senior Center is on hiatus, so your report's really short. Okay, great. All right. Does anybody have any comments or questions for the town manager in his report and Cindy with hers?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Regarding the airport, with what they're proposing to pay for, is that replacing existing equipment or is that some like new? Or is it new? I just reading through the documentation, I didn't get my, the answer through the documentation we provided. I'm just curious if it's.
The PAPs and the AWAs are new.
Okay.
The segmented circle is new. The wind cone is being relocated.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for the town manager in his report? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Moving along, we're in our public comment section during this time. We welcome the public to come up to the podium. Please state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes to speak to the council. Does anybody wish to speak to the council tonight? Mr. Frangoz, okay.
Just a couple of quick ones. I noticed in this, for today's meeting, you had a work session at 6 o'clock regarding Capitol Projects, the middle school. Is that open to the public?
Yes, yes, it is open. Anybody can come, you can listen there, you'll be, you're not able to ask questions or participate.
No, no.
You can certainly, yeah, you could come.
Okay, that's good to hear. And adding on to that, let's see, one, two, oh. As far as the Capitol Projects, because of the middle school, and the reason I'm focusing in on the middle school is because of the discussions we had at the last meeting and the voting process, et cetera, et cetera. Will there be updates on this? If, I don't know where we're going to be standing, but an update how this project is progressing?
Of course.
In a town council meeting?
Well, I would expect so. We met with the Capitol Projects Building Committee and some representatives from the school, you know, the superintendent was here, and we talked about some questions that the town council had, and we did ask for additional information. The project is not going to go forward any sooner than at least another year. So it is not going to be taking place, at least for another year, and it could be longer than that. We did agree that we will meet periodically, maybe every few months, to get updates and talk about how the project is looking, but that's what we talked about and.
The only question, and this is just shooting from the hip on this one, the updates on the middle school, and you know how I feel about as new, but what about for what's going on in the world today updating the middle school and the rest of our schools to be safe? Was that entered into the picture? Just a curiosity question.
What do you mean by what's going on in the world today? I'm not sure that I understand.
The shootings, the shootings.
Oh, okay.
Make sure our children.
Security, security.
Yes.
Issues. That was, that was talked about, and again, that's going to be something that will be talked about in the next several months as to whether that should be done separately, whether they feel the security at the school is sufficient right now before going into a complete build-out of a vestibule. So we're going to be talking with them down the road further about other issues besides security, but yes, that's a conversation we'll be having.
Thank you. Do you kind of have a couple more minutes?
Go ahead, yep, I used up some of your time.
This is from the other prior meeting, and just as a curiosity question, because I really didn't understand, talking with Mr. Lee, the town manager, we were talking about the Wheeler School invoicing, the $4,986. What kept going through my mind after the meeting was, in the course of the conversation, they said the funding for the Wheeler School was closed. If the funding for the Wheeler School was closed, where did the $4,900 come from?
I'm not sure about that. I think that was on our dashboard.
Yes. Some roofwork needed to be done. It was done late. We did a final request for reimbursement from the state that did not include that number. We're going to try to amend that, but that budget, that project came in significantly under budget, so to answer your question, it comes from the remaining amount that's left in the project.
It's within the budget?
Yes.
Let's answer the question, so it's coming from that original?
Original appropriation, and we hope to get state reimbursement for it if we can.
Thank you. And the final question is, and this really is curiosity, when is the warehouse that they're building now going to be operational?
I believe next year, 2023. We're talking about Americald on Northwest Drive?
Yes.
Okay. Robert, do you have additional information?
I do. Town staff, building staff has told me that Americald expects to be, have the building completed somewhere around October, but then they're going to do, start their startup operation, so they won't actually be functional, is what I'm told. It's going to take them several months to program everything.
Okay.
To, you know, test all their systems and, you know, and receive deliveries. So they don't expect that they'll actually be delivering out of there till early next year.
Done.
But the building is supposed to be completed by October.
Thank you. And let me just close with this, because I brought this up prior regarding the warehousing. Looking, every time I go by that place, I look at the size of it, and I had worked in distribution at one point. I'm still concerned, and maybe to know, maybe it's really not necessary, is the amount of traffic that's going to be flowing in and out of that building, do we have the capacity for the roads in that area to handle 18-wheelers at that amount?
Well, the company was required by the Planning and Zoning Commission to provide the number of trucks that was anticipated on a daily basis, and it's less than you might imagine. I can send you a copy of that. We've actually published that on our webpage. It's, you know, we're talking about a truck on 177 even during the, you know, their busiest day, one every six or seven minutes, you know, so, you know, you tell me whether that makes a difference or not.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Anybody else wish to speak to the council? Your last chance, anybody else? Okay, I will close public comment and moving along, we do not have any old business to take care of, so we will go into our approval of our new business items. Mr. Underwood?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to award bid number 2023-02, crack sealing under CROG, C-R-O-G, bid number 7218 to U Seal, Bloomfield, Connecticut, in the amount not to exceed $50,000.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, number two.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute an amendment to the condominium trash and recycling collection agreement with CWPM for the current price of $208.81 per unit per year beginning July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2027, five years.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, item number three.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to execute the FAA grant agreement offer for the installation of PAPI-AWAs, primary wind cone and segmented circle.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
Motion to approve and authorize the town manager to enter into a reimbursement agreement with Manafort Newport Realty to clean out the White Oak Building in the amount of $84,510.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Just based on my relationship with the parties involved, I will recuse myself from this vote.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, number five.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to authorize the town manager to move forward with the Honor Heights Sewer Project with the understanding that any beneficial assessment to the property owners would not exceed $10,000.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion?
Madam Chair.
Go right ahead.
Just a quick discussion, I, you know, I'm hesitant to just move forward and say, you know, we're going to move forward with it, and we promise to look at the beneficial assessment at a later time. And I understand that we do need to have the project completed to understand exactly what we're spending and how much it costs. I guess what I'm trying to go find is, you know, if we go forward with this tonight, is there a way to reach out to the neighborhood once again and maybe have another work session with them or some opportunity for them to talk to us again as far as their thoughts on the beneficial assessment, you know, before we get into the project?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I will tell you that $10,000 assessment, and it says not to exceed $10,000, it was about five, six years ago, I had a cottage at Amston Lake, and they were putting in sewers, and the assessment value of that project was $20,000 to $25,000 per resident. This is a bargain at $10,000, whether it stays at $10,000 or not, not to exceed $10,000, I think the property owners in that area are getting a good deal. And I also want to add that I used to live in that neighborhood, and I would have accepted the $10,000 as a price for my house at the time.
I understand your concern, you know, I do, and we had a number of people at that work session talking and, you know, telling us about some of the hardship it might cause some of them. There were some folks that were very much in favor of it because they realized the benefit to having sanitary sewers put in. To have another work session, I think we've done that already. I'm not sure having another work. I don't know that that's going to sway anybody's vote on the ultimate decision to do this. I certainly would support a lower beneficial assessment if we could do that, but if we can't do that until after the project's completed, I don't know what the point of having another work session would be. I don't know if anybody's opinion would change by doing that, because it was a long, a long session that we had, and there were lots of people that came, and I do understand, I understand their plight, that was not lost on me, but I'm not sure having another one with the same people, we'd get a different result.
I have a suggestion perhaps. When the bids come in for the project and we know what the costs are, that would be a good time to have a public information session or a public hearing where people come in and say, okay, here's the project cost, we've estimated 1.2, 1.4, we're probably at 1.2 or we're at 1 million or, you know, whatever, and as a result, you know, you might be able to, you know, say that, well, if we use the 540 in this way, that brings the average assessment down, or the council could, you know, make some decisions at that point. I think it would be more fruitful if it was done once you knew, not when the project was completed, but before the project started, but when you had more numbers.
And that's fine, that makes sense to me. I just think, you know, I think what I heard when we met with this group is, there is some concern, and quite honestly, I don't think there's a lot of trust right now with the fact that we'll say, yeah, let us, we're going to approve the project and we promise to look at this beneficial assessment. I just don't think there's the trust, and I, the more we can communicate with them and the more we can allow them to have their say and talk to us, I just think it makes it easier for everyone involved so that incorrect information doesn't get spread around the neighborhood and we can.
Jeez, who would do that?
You know, it'd be the first time in the history of Plainville, but it does happen elsewhere from what I read. The internet's an amazing place, but, but yeah, you know, I just think, I don't think, you know, at some point, I think we need to engage the neighborhood once again, and after we get some more specific numbers, that makes sense to me, I'm fine with that. I just don't think we can, at this point, not communicate with the neighborhood anymore.
And that was one of the reasons why I recommended that you do cap it at $10,000, because there was people who said, well, how do we know it's going to be $10,000, it's not going to be $15,000 or $20,000?
Yeah.
And I think at least that's, that concern, you know, is taken away with this motion if it's passed.
Yep, okay.
And Robert, how many years are we talking before this would be completed?
Next year.
It'd probably be by the, if it was done next.
Next year.
Next, you know, construction season, I think John said this was like a three, four-month project, so it'd be done by the end of '23.
Okay.
No, I think that, you know, we should do everything we can. I agree with that approach, but are you not wanting to go forward with the project at this point or?
Oh, no, I think we need to continue moving forward with the project.
Okay.
I think one of the things we heard is that there were several people who absolutely did not want to talk about it under any circumstance, but I think the majority of the people were in favor of sewers, however, that $10,000 beneficial assessment was something they just couldn't get over, and I think it's important that, since that's going to be the piece that's still questioned, or there's going to be questions about that piece of this project.
Yep.
It's important that we still engage the neighborhood.
I agree. I think that further, more information is always better.
Madam Chair.
As we get that in.
I assume that, you know, as the project is being completed, the other piece of information that we'll receive is we will have a professional do some sort of appraisal as to what's really adding to the property value. So there'll be other information, including the, how much does it really end up costing information, which, you know, might be relevant to what we actually end up setting. But certainly by, with the do not exceed, we are certainly providing some assurance that it's not just some unpredictable number that could go much higher.
If you, if you would like, you know, I could draft up a notice to all of the residents to talk about the action that was taken this evening, to mention that it was capped, you know, no more than $10,000, that the town council, when the, you know, before the project begins, the bids are in, you know, would call them to, would notify them if they wanted to attend the council meeting, have a discussion before it began, that that would probably happen, you know, maybe next time, next, or next spring.
Yeah.
And if you have any questions, call Mike Paulus in Newtown.
Nice project to start off with.
But I mean, I could, I could draft something up, have you take a look at it, and if it's your muster, you know.
That's fine with me.
Even have it coming from the town council members.
Yep.
Sure. Yeah, no, I think that's a good solution.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any other discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries, number six.
Madam Chair. Motion to award bid number 2023-03, building officials vehicle under state contract number 19PSX 0161 to Gangres Ford, Plainville, Connecticut, in the amount of $35,307.40.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number seven.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to award bid number 2023-04, building and grounds vehicle under state contract 19PSX 0161 to Gangres Ford, Plainville, Connecticut, in the amount of $47,812.40.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number eight.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to establish a public hearing in the municipal center on Monday, August 15th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. to hear public comment on the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item nine.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Robert, do we have any other items for discussion tonight?
Two brief items. One is that the State Department of Health has issued a heat advisory over the next couple of days, and I just wanted to remind the town council and Plainville residents that our cooling center, should one need one, is the library when it is open, and if, for some reason, it's beyond those hours, you know, the police department is also. some reason, it's beyond those hours, you know, the police department is also an area where people can go to gather if they have to, and if it goes, you know, if there's a significant amount of people, you know, the police department will contact town manager and will make arrangements to open up a shelter if necessary. But right now, we encourage people to use the library, which is open, you know, pretty much during the day, daytime hours and into the evening, and, you know, certainly during the, you know, hottest part of the days, certainly the municipal center is open as well if necessary. We could accommodate some people, and the police department, if it was after hours.
Is the senior center designated as such a facility or no?
They're not, but they're open. They're open for the seniors as well, you know, during the week, and, you know, we could open it up on a Saturday if necessary.
Okay. Thank you.
The last thing I have is, town staff met with Standard and Poor's last week to go through our ratings process in anticipation of our, you know, issuing of bonds in August, and we expect to have a response from them by Friday. So, when we get that, I'll make sure we get, at least what the recommendation is going to be to the Standard and Poor's committee. I will say that the two analysts that we spent a little, probably about an hour and a half with, usually go about an hour, you know, they were, again, very impressed with the town, very impressed with the town's finances, you know. I don't, when I got done, I said we look forward to them recommending that we increase to a AAA.